Call the meeting to order, please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Can I have a statement in compliance to open public meetings act?
In compliance with the open public meetings act, adequate notice of this meeting of the council was provided by transmitting a copy of the meeting notice to the Madison Eagle and the Morris County Daily Record, posting a copy on the bulletin board at the main entrance of Borough Hall, and filing a copy in the office of the Clerk Hall on February 25th, 2019. Copies of said notice were made available to members of the general public.
Roll call.
Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mrs. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Rowe.
Here.
Ms. Byrne.
Here.
Mr. Hoover.
Here.
And Ms. Cohen.
Here.
All right, as people probably figured out right now, John has called in, and as discussion goes through, I will try to pull him in at the end of each round of discussion, because I won't see him raise his hand. So agenda is pretty straightforward. This is the presentation of the draft budget, along with understanding of our revenue from the Green Village Road School property, taxes from new ratables, a review of how the budget lines up with strategic planning guidelines, and also presentation of alternate budget format, and then the marching orders to our CFO, if we're all in agreement at that point. And then we'll have the usual public comment. And before we start our business, I just want to, since 24 hours ago, we were looking at snow coming down, and quite a bit came down. As I was saying earlier today, that March is the new January, with seems to be just like last year, heavy snows, literally heavy snows. And very quickly, our Madison streets were cleared till blacktop. Thanks to DPW, had to deal with the Friday night, Saturday morning storm, and then again last night. So, thank you for all the work there. All right. CFO, you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. PSA, for everybody to speak into their microphones, it'll make sure that Councilman Hoover can hear. So we're here for another round of budget hearings. As discussed previous times, from a transparency standpoint, residents are encouraged to go to RoseNet, where there is a full page on the entire budget process with every presentation included on there. The area at the top there where the larao is, shows you even how to drill down to it very simply through the menu structure at RoseNet. Mayor mentioned the budget schedule for this evening. This is the budget schedule that we've been through since November. I'm gonna just, I'm not gonna talk about it except for tonight, that we're here for the special meeting with the revised budget strategic planning guidelines, and hopefully guidance for Ray and I to move forward with preparing the official state budget document, which would then be introduced March 25th. I'm gonna skip this, we've all seen this before, but we've gone around the merry-go-round once, about one, one and a half times, and it's just a cycle process that we go through here at the Borough. We've talked about capital on December 10th, January 4th, and February 25th. We talked about open space on January 14th. We talked about utilities on January 28th, municipal appropriations on February 11th and February 25th, and a surplus review on February 11th. The goal this evening is to tie it all together, and hopefully there will be consensus with the council to move forward to create the state budget document based on numbers that are agreed upon this evening. The mayor mentioned the agenda, so I'm not gonna go into detail there, but I'll say the first budget highlight we have is that the document that's being presented here has a 0% property tax increase, which we'll talk about later on, and why we're having it and why we're doing it. Next budget highlight is 6.3 million for, the next budget highlight is 6.3 million for capital improvements and critical infrastructure, and that is over $28 million for capital improvements in the next five years being structured. That's for roads, utilities, and all critical infrastructure. The electric dividend is increased from 1.5 million to 2 million. That was discussed at a previous meeting, and we are able to accommodate that. The targeted rebate for income-eligible residents has been increased from $150 to $200. And the budget includes a very manageable 2.16% increase in total appropriations, or if that's spending, the spending side. And I think that's important, if you look at that over multiple years, there's been a very slow, steady growth, not any serious large bumps in any one year, and that's a testament to the department heads and council, and everyone keeping appropriations and spending down. The big new item in the budget this year is $370,000 in recurring revenue that will come on the income side, and that is part of the GVR property. Revenue that comes from that, it's the tax, if you will, that comes from that. Because we're getting that $370,000 in, and they're paying their share of taxes, we don't have to increase taxes for anyone else. So that's a nice thing. It's a good news budget in many ways. I've talked about the first five bullet points highlighted on slide 12, and I'll, John, I'll try to continue to reference what slide number we're on, because I know you're flipping through a deck there. But on slide 12, you'll see, in addition to the points that I just brought forward, one important item is that we're reducing our reliance on the electric utility surplus in the budget, for operating by over 300,000, and in total by over 360,000. There's no change in the level of service for residents, there's no change in the water utility rates, they're unchanged for 10 years in a row. There's extra funds in the budget for grass field maintenance, there is the replacement of two Public Works employees, and money reserved for the MRC turf reskinning, and a commitment to explore additional turf field with the Board of Education. Bear with me here. So I want to talk for a few minutes about the GVR property. We've had a lot of people question it, and ask, can you explain how this works, what's there? So there are 100 transit-oriented apartment units and 35 high-end condominiums and 4,500 square feet of retail space. The Borough gets multiple benefits, multiple one-time benefits, but multiple recurring benefits. There's the 3,000 square foot community space, which the Borough gets rent-free for 30 years. There's 16,000 square feet of outside performance space with a stage the Borough has access to. The Board of Education received $11 million, they received $12 million and gave the Borough $1 million to help pay for the MRC turf fields. The property generated $894,688 in permit and utility connection fees. And as a reminder, the property was previously tax-exempt and wasn't generating any revenue. So it went from generating 0 to 370,000 in this year's budget, and a continual recurring revenue in future budgets, as well as all of these benefits. As a reminder, the breakdown for the tax bill is 22.5% for municipal. John, this is slide 14. School board is 62.1%, and the county is 15.4%. And with the Green Village Road property, a pilot or payment in lieu of tax was created through a financial agreement, and it enables the Borough to retain a much larger percentage of every tax dollar. Instead of us giving 15.4% to the county, we all have to give 5% to them. In this agreement, the Borough will get 95% of the revenue, and will share part of that revenue with the Board of Education. That revenue that the Board of Education gets is above and beyond what they can ask for in their levy, so it's kind of, to us, it would be classified as kind of outside-the-cap revenue.
Can we, so the pie chart at the top is what the breakdown of the bill is. Do we know what the, we're saying 0% for us, which is awesome, but do we know what the school tax and the county tax are gonna, are projected to be?
Not exactly, but we can assume that the Board of Education's gonna go up by 2-plus percent. They have the ability, they have the ability to go up 2% every year. There's also some other opportunities where they can go slightly above 2%. So that, I think, is a guarantee, given their financial situation and the conversation we've had with, with the folks at the Board of Education. The county is an interesting calculation. Someday I'm gonna, like I have the mayor of, I have Conleyville and how to explain taxes, one day I'm gonna try to explain how county taxes work, and how they can change, but I'll try to do it simply here. Each year, the county looks at properties across the entire county, and they determine how much each percentage of each town takes of the county budget. Let's say this year Madison is 2.1, or last year Madison was 2.15%. That's based on our assessed values, and it's equalized across the entire county. If for some reason Madison has increasing ratable base, like we do, and we're in a better property tax situation, or property valuation situation than other parts of the county, we may go from 2.15% of that budget to 2.2%. If we do, then we're gonna take a larger share of the budget. So the county budget could be flat, and ours would go up. If the county budget goes up by 2%, you'll see your line on your tax go up by 42%.
Thank you. And, and this breakdown is based on the 2018, not 2019?
Correct.
So because, because we don't know what the school tax is yet, and we don't know what the county tax is. And if we're assuming that we're holding the line on our taxes, I would imagine that that municipal share would actually go down.
I agree with that, yes. But you're right, we don't strike the tax rate until June, July, when everything's finally in, the governor's budgets in and everything, so, so we'll know more then.
And since we're a fairly small slice already, it is a very tiny slice of the pie that if it went down, but we take care of the slice we can.
Down is down.
Is down. So, talking about the GVR property, that's Green Village Road property, the property on King's Road, for people that might be watching on TV, it's interesting to compare it to other apartment complexes in Madison. General Wayne has 97 units and generates property taxes of $248,000 a year. Town Gardens, 200,000, there's 80 units. And I'm not gonna read through the whole list here, but you can see that the GVR property by far and away is going to generate the most "property taxes," quote-unquote, compared to any other development. And it's because of the high-quality nature and the high rental nature, and it's also because of the financial agreement that we have with, with the operator and developer of the property.
I have one, I have a question. On that 683, 617, if we broke the 35 townhouse condos out, would that demonstrably change, I mean, obviously it would change that number, but would it be more than the 38% that it represents now?
So if we just did 100 apartments, and didn't include the...
Because the condos pay...
Yeah, so little apples and potatoes, I understand, or apples and oranges. So if we just did 100 apartment units, it would still be over, I believe, $470,000.
Okay.
So the per-unit tax that's being generated, just apartments to other apartments, is still significant. As the only other development that generates more property taxes as residential is the Madison Commons, but there are so many more units over there. They generate 1.7 million dollars in total over there, but that's a little, little different. So...
Do we know approximately how many units are in Madison Commons?
I'll do some math, but I'm gonna just guess here, Maureen, to be honest with you.
It's gotta be a couple hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's well over, I think it's in the high 200s, based on a rough guess. I can find the information out and get back to you.
And Jim, the, that number, that's for when they started, they didn't rent all of 2018, right? So that number would theoretically be higher for 2019, if it's...
It will be higher, and it will be higher because the pilot is calculated, there's three different calculations we have to go through, and shout out to Chrissy and the tax collection department for helping me out with this. There's the base, which is a solid number, and a very good number, that it can't go below. There's the top end, which is ad valorem taxes. We can't charge them more than they would actually pay in ad valorem taxes. Then there's the calculation. And we're at the lower end of the spectrum. When we get into the upper end of the spectrum, you'll see that number go up, I would say. As we're looking here, the GVR property in relation to other, the 683,000, that could go up to over 800,000 in the next year or two.
And that's almost a given, because they have like four, five under contract right now. Just looking at them today. And those are the townhouses, that's gonna be the generation of...
Right.
Increase those tax rates, so.
So we're on slide 16, and it shows our top six largest taxpayers in 2018. Allergan, which is your drive, and we'll have a map and show you where Allergan is. Realogy, I think most people know where Realogy is, that's on Park Avenue, the corner of Park Avenue and Chateau Théory. Then GVR, and then three other office properties in Geraldine. So jumping to slide 17, you can see where these offices are. Geraldine Sevens on the corner of Woodland and Luanica, a very visible one, the most recently built one. Geraldine Two, Merck Animal Health, very hard to even see the building, really tucked. Geraldine Five has the new parking deck, that's Allergan, that's our single largest property taxpayer. Geraldine Four is the corner of Luanica and Madison Avenue, that's under development with Atlantic Health. And then Geraldine One and Geraldine Three. Geraldine Three is where Quest was, they're currently looking for a tenant there. Geraldine One has Pfizer and a few other tenants there. So it's just a reminder of what it's like over there, we don't always get over to the farm, to see what's going on in there.
Have we seen at the ballpark what the Atlantic Health complex is gonna generate?
I don't think we've seen plans from them in terms of what the entire complex is gonna be. It seems like it's gonna be multiple stages.
Yes.
So I haven't talked to the tax assessor in terms of the size of the building and per square foot to get an indication. It's a relatively small building in comparison to the others here, so I would anticipate that it would be, whoops, let's see if I can go backwards here, I would anticipate that the property taxes, and there's a discussion that we're gonna have with them about their nonprofit status, and they're paying taxes on that property as hospitals will state that they're not-for-profit. So there's, there's a lot more to go there, but if it's taxable, it'll be, my guess, in a $200,000 range that we would get.
And that's gonna be built out over a number of years, so we'll see a growing, they'll pick up either a growing piece of the pie, or they'll generate some type of growing revenue stream over the next probably three to five years?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
Do we, do we know what their arrangement is with Morristown?
Um...
I mean, they obviously are, they're paying taxes in Morristown, the hospital in Morristown.
And then they have a community service agreement also. What, you know, what's different than Morris, they have partnered with a for-profit Kindred Healthcare, with the building currently going up, and so we are, you know, assuming that is a for-profit operation, since Kindred will pretty much be running the operation.
So going to slide, to sheet 18, total taxes collected, whoops, I went too far. 2018, we collected $683,000. And I want to be clear here, a portion of that was pilot, a portion of that was land tax, and a portion of that was administrative fees. We did not appropriate or use any of that money, if you will, it was put into a coffee can, and we're gonna be realizing that revenue for the first time this year in this year's budget. So I know we've had some conversations with the Board of Education, kind of questioning how the pilot's working, when the revenue's going to flow to them, and it will be flowing to them shortly. I think both entities will be taking advantage of that revenue, certainly the Borough will be in this year. So in 2019, we're expecting to be over $800,000. There's a little bit of a breakdown below. The pilot itself is 200, is $590,000, land tax of 200,000, and an administrative fee of 14,200. That's our estimate. It could be low. I've been known to be a little conservative, so it might be a little low. We'll know at the end of the year, as Carmella, as Councilwoman Vitale referenced, if more of the condominiums sell, that will generate more revenue, so...
Can we just go back one, a little bit confused with the two, the pilot, that goes to the Board of Ed? Okay. In this 2018, is that all of the taxes collected? And that includes the pilot?
Their share.
Their share, yeah. Their share of the pilot as well?
Correct.
So this number...
The $683,000 is the total benefit to the community, if you will. It's $44,000.
So you owe them 32.5% of this.
Of the pilot part of that.
Of the pilot portion.
Yeah, but not of the 683. It's, it's of the smaller percentage of the pilots, subtracting out the land tax.
So the 370 that we've collected from them in taxes, is that what we collected?
370 is what we're going to use in our budget in 2019, based on the total collection of 683,218. And that was kind of a mouthful, a little...
Carmella, if you look at, if you look at 2019, the 800,000, so 200,000 comes out of it, and then 14 comes out of it, so you're talking about, what the pilot says, 590. So if they're getting 32% of 590, it's about 175,000. We'll get about 60%.
That's where I kind of got lost.
So that comes out to the 370 that Jim's budgeting.
Okay, got it.
And, the way, the way the pilot works is, the entities pay that, and they pay their land tax, and at the beginning of the following year, we make sure that they've paid their land tax, and they get a credit against the pilot, the upcoming pilot. So there's conversations with the Board of Education, we're trying to explain to them why there's, why that is the triggering event, when they will, when they will be paid the money. But they will be paid the money this year, assuming all goes well in the quarter one, and it'll be over $130,000 for this year, based on last year's pilot revenues.
Question?
John, you have a...
Yes, I do have a question. Please, on, on that GVR property slide, the total amount of taxes by those six is $5,037,000-odd dollars. What percentage of the total tax revenue is that?
Okay, so John, I think we're talking about slide 16, where it has Allergy, and Realogy, and Geraldine, Merck, is that, and you're kind of adding all of that up and saying, how does that compare to our total taxes that come into tax?
The total is $5,037,000-odd dollars, and I was just asking, I kind of question, what percentage of our total income is that?
So...
Total tax revenue.
Okay, so we, we tax a total of about $68 million, which gets broken up to the Borough, the county, and then 60-some-odd percent to the Board of Education, over 30, 34 million to the Board of Education. So, that's how it all breaks out.
So it's less than 10%?
Thank you.
So...
Thank you.
Yes, less than 10%, but not insignificant.
No.
Nope.
Little 10%.
Yep. So in terms of the GVR property, other revenues and information, as I mentioned earlier, we've collected $894,000 over the last three years in construction fees, in sewer and water, water connection fees. We anticipate that in this year, we will likely, we don't have the history on it, so we're estimating, to have $200,000 a year in electric and water utility revenues from the property. As a reminder, I don't think everyone knows this, but the majority of the time, in condominiums and apartments, they can come to the Borough of Madison and ask for reimbursement when they have their own garbage removed, but in the pilot agreement, we made that separate. They can't be reimbursed for snow removal where we do that at the Madison Commons. They can't be reimbursed for garbage where we do that at General Wayne. So that's another savings that the Borough gleans by not having to pay the GVR property back for those expenses. And as of last week, in speaking with the Board of Education, there's only one student in Madison Public School Systems that currently lives in the development. Yes, Deb?
I have two questions. Do we have any, I, I know that they're built for not, they're not, I don't want to say they're not family-friendly, but they're built more for the commuting. So do we expect that number to stay low, as far as the number of students potentially?
We do. The development that we've seen in other towns that's similar, this transit-oriented development, where the units, there's, there's not a lot of open space, not playgrounds, not where it's situated, has a very, very low number of students in it, so I would not expect that number to rise much at all. So it will have a very minimal negative impact on classroom sizes, but will have the positive impact of the revenue for the town and for the Board of Education.
And then my other question, when you say they pay their own garbage removal, are they paying us and DPW is doing it, or they just, they, they have their own separate, and for snow removal as well, they use whoever it is they use?
Private, all privately contracted, yes.
You know, going back to, if I, if I remember correctly, I don't know if you remember, Bob, the Board of Education did some kind of calculation when we were going through the process of building GVR, and I think their expectation was probably not more than eight students at the time, coming out of that, that complex. It was very low.
Yeah, it wasn't the Board of Ed, we asked each of the developers, when they came in, what they ballparked, because we did want to know how much it might end up costing us, you know, we don't want a Pyrrhic victory, and they kind of all ballparked it low. They said, this type of development is typically empty nesters, or young professionals, and it's kind of like an intro into the town a lot of times.
Yep, and so it's...
It's working out the way...
Yep.
Actually, it's probably less than we anticipated.
Yep.
Amen.
And as was referenced earlier, 18 of the, about 18 of the condos have sold, four under contract, so that means, we hear four under contract, that means 13 are still for sale. I believe almost 100% of the apartments are for rent, so it's not as though the place is three-quarters empty. It's almost completely full, and only has one student there. So I'm going to go through this very quickly, because everyone has seen this before, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna let people at home look at the slides, but we talk about Conleyville, and we talk about how taxes can go up through development, but how an individual home's property taxes won't go up. When a vacant lot makes less property taxes, and then a new home is built on it, that new home pays more in property taxes. That new home, or in this particular case, a new development on, for GVR, can represent the entire property tax increase for the year for the town, resulting in everyone else not having to, any increase in their property taxes. So that's the way that works, and anyone that has any questions on that, they can, they can come back to me on that. So, but I want to show where that reflects on the revenue side of the budget. So John, we're on slide 24 now, where the line, property taxes, new ratables, that is property taxes for new homes, for new ratables, for someone that may have done development at their house, and had an addition put on their house, they had a new assessment for that portion of their house. That slice of the new prop, of the, of the, those ratables will pay this year, anticipated, unanticipated, known, $91,730. So property taxes in town will be going up, but they won't be going up on the average homeowner if you didn't do any work on your house and didn't have a change in your assessment. So, that's how that works. Talk for a little bit about municipal surplus. We talked about this a few weeks ago, John, we're on slide 25. We expected surplus balances to remain flat in 2018, we're targeting that. However, we had an excellent year in surplus, and it increased by $1 million. And we talked about this at the last meeting, interest rates increased significantly, and the balances that we had in the bank, in the various banks that we have, generated over 200,000 more in interest than we had anticipated in the budget. 2018 was the first year where we received revenue from KRE development, that went into the pot, we didn't spend it. We talked about that before, how we're not spending it until this year, but that generated $450,000 in additional bump on the surplus. And then, as I've mentioned multiple times in the past, the department heads were fiscally responsible, and only purchased what they needed, and the dollar amount not spent in the 2017 budget becomes surplus. So 2017 ends, that budget kind of gets put to the side, bills may come in in 2018, first three, four, five months, those bills get paid, and then at the end of 2018, that excess money lapses into surplus.
But can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, the difference between what we, we only purchased what we needed?
So I'll give you, I'll give you an example. We have a robust snow removal budget, and some years we need more, and some years we need less, same with salt. And so as a result, in that particular year, we had $150,000 of additional budget that we didn't use, that, that are, we didn't use that year. Sewer chemicals, we used $20,000 less. Garbage tipping fees, we don't know how much garbage the town's gonna generate in a year, so we, we have, we make sure we have enough money. And there was $120,000 in that budget that wasn't used, and so that lapses. Fuel would be another one, we can't anticipate what the cost of fuel's gonna be throughout the course of the year, so we estimate on the high side. And if fuel prices don't go... the course of the year, so we estimate on the high side. And if fuel prices don't go up, then additional money ultimately lapses and becomes surplus. So it's just a good example of Department of Public Works and other departments doing a very good job only spending what they need.
Let's say we took a different approach and had budget bare minimum for fuel, bare minimum for salt and all that, and the worst-case winter hit, and there was oil embargoes and all sorts of things. How does a municipality make up when they've underbudgeted?
Well, I hate to say, the first thing they would do is start to cut back on those services. So you might not see the snow removal be as robust as it was last night and today. And then the second would be ultimately declaring an emergency, and an emergency appropriation, spending surplus, and then having to have that emergency appropriation embedded in next year's budget. So that would be kind of a big bounce that you wouldn't want to have happen.
But, you know, the flip side is, you know, we've been growing our surplus faster than we've been growing our budget. We've grown our free balance faster than we've grown our budget. So we're getting, we've gotten to the point, we've passed the point, where we have plenty of money to cover all that stuff. So I think going forward, one of the things we have to do is, at least till we get the surplus number to flatten out, to be more realistic, and I would say be less pessimistic, not necessarily conservative, because we just keep growing our surplus, and we're now bringing in a lot of money that we're just not using.
I will agree with that. And Maureen, you had a...
Oh, I was just going to say, you know, I have young sons, and one of them learned the hard way, that if you don't budget enough for something, then you have an emergency, and you go to your credit card, and it's twenty-three percent interest. So I think being fiscally responsible, maybe we're too fiscally responsible, but certainly airing on the side of caution and maintaining a good cushion is, I think, fiscally responsible.
Astrae?
I mean, having surplus is a very nice thing for this community, to be able to say it has. But I mean, I agree with what everybody said, that we should be looking at it. I mean, I sat on the council with Carmella years ago, where we had no surplus to provide for capital projects, to let things go by the wayside. But we can also, one of the things we can look at is, you know, we've, for example, we've taken the fire truck, and we are doing that over two years. Maybe we could just go ahead and do it in one year, you know, because we have the money. And I mean, I think that this is a discussion we need to have going forward, because it seems to be consistently getting larger.
Yeah. And I circulated the spreadsheet. I've been going back and forth with Jim. He passed it out today, and I don't think there's going to be time for people to consume it tonight, but I think, much like the other budget guidelines, we should have a range that we're keeping some of these free balances and surpluses within, and I would argue that we're significantly above where they should be. The one thing I would say, though, about what Astrae said is, the good thing about the way we've been doing the capital budgeting for big-ticket items is, it does kind of keep our capital budget relatively flat or steady over a period of years. And the only way to really do that and not have a spike would be to short-change something else in that one year. I really do like the idea that we've kind of gotten everything kind of on an even keel. It's just that we've kind of been very conservative about what we think it's going to cost, and what it turns out costing us, or how much revenue we think we're going to bring in, and how much we really bring in. And as a result, you know, we're now sitting on, depending on how you look at it, somewhere between about ten and fourteen million dollars that we're not going to use in this year's budget, we're not going to use for this year's capital programs. That's a lot of money. That's almost as much as we charge in taxes for one year to run the municipality. That's like two-plus years' worth of capital projects for everything, including electric utilities. So I think, you know, we do need to make a commitment going forward, that we will come up with something like we did with strategic planning, and this way councils will know, you know, where you don't want to go below, and where when you get to the upper end of the limit, you start to work the number back to a more manageable number. Because the money we're bringing in and not using is residents' money. It's either coming in through property taxes, or electric rates, or water rates, or other fees that we have, but essentially the first three.
Astrae, and then Maureen?
Thank heavens for the surplus during Sandy, number one.
Make my microphone there.
Sorry. Thank heavens for the surplus, because we all remember Sandy and the fact that we had the money to be able to take care of our community. Number two, we are proposing zero percent increase in taxes this year, because we do have the money. And number three, we are giving half a million dollars more in electric rebate or dividend. So I think we are aware, but to Pat's point again, you know, I think we could look at it a little bit more carefully and see whether there's a guideline that we need to impose that puts a cap on it.
Maureen, did you...
Yeah, to both of those points. I mean, a lot of it goes towards capital projects or emergencies that develop. We kind of need to have a glide pattern in it on all levels, on the tax level, on the electric utility rate, and the water rate, because, you know, it's, well, it's much more palatable to everybody to go slowly down, as opposed to a drop, to get rid of everything, and then all of a sudden, the next year, we're going, next year we raise the taxes and the rates and everything else. So it's like the, I think we'll agree, I think, like the capital spending, where we estimate over a five-year period, we need to come up with a similar over-five-years-period how we're going to address this surplus situation.
So before we come back over to this, and I think we have close consensus as to the, that the surplus is growing, it's growing to a level that is nice on one side, but we don't, that's not our business to grow the surplus. So we want to create a path and guideline to get it back to what is, can sustain our municipality, have even keel tax increases, and be ready for that literally rainy day when it comes. So Pat?
Just two quick points. One on Sandy. Sandy happened in two thousand and twelve. At the end of that year, our unencumbered funds was six-point-six million. Today, it's fourteen-point-five. So we survived Sandy with eight million dollars less. So I think that alone drives home the point. The second is, you know, I have worked very hard to make sure that things are kind of even. When we talked about whether you want to call it electric rate cut or a dividend, I didn't ask to have the rates slashed in a way that was just a one-year thing. And we're now seeing after three years, we're actually able to increase the level of money we're giving back or letting the residents hold on to. So I think, you know, I definitely want to make sure that we're not doing this in a knee-jerk fashion, and that we're doing something that is sustainable.
Sounds good. And we'll go Carmella, and then we'll go to the voice above, John Hoover. So Carm...
You know, I have to agree with everything that we've been talking about. I've been thinking about this since early morning, and I absolutely believe that this conversation really doesn't have anything to do with this year's budget, in my opinion, at this point. I think what we need to do is, you know, bring together possibly the Strategic Planning Group, there's a few of them, I think, at this point, and with the council, and make a decision like how we can work in maybe a revised position, as far as surplus is concerned. When I think about what we did in the last couple of years utilizing this surplus, it's been extraordinary. We're going to put another six-point-three million into capital again this year, and I think that's an important factor. I realize what Pat's talking about, but I think that it's one, it's a conversation that has to be held all by itself. With, you know, I'd like, first of all, to make sure, I know that you put this together, Pat, and I'm not insulting you.
I did have Jim check.
Yeah, I would love for Jim to check these figures, you know, and make sure that, you know, they're okay. And I'm sure they probably are, because you've got... Not that I don't trust you, I just want to make sure that those figures are coming from the CFO.
And I did check some of them, but I didn't go number by number, and I did provide a few of these numbers, too, so.
We kind of collaborated on this.
I understand that, but just my feeling.
That's fine.
I want to be absolutely sure that these are the numbers that we should be looking at, and, you know, especially going back, because our past really has made a difference in what we are today. You know, it's very obvious. We've done, we've made some great strides in, you know, in our appropriations and stuff like that to get us to this point, so.
Thank you. And John, just one second. I just want to kind of summarize a little bit of Carmella. I think what I'm hearing, one, we probably don't need, as we'll see shortly, as we take this year's budget and put it up against the guidelines that was put together by the Strategic Planning Processes, was very good and still very valid. So we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We're just trying to check the air pressure and making sure the wheel is balanced. So that's what we'll, I'll take a look at who we had on the finance part of that, and people that we have in the room now, and use that as a group to help look at, take an in-depth look. John?
Yeah, I appreciate the conversation, and generally, I agree with the theme of what I think I'm hearing, that is, perhaps relook at the guidelines for surplus and free balance, and do something more reasonable. I would hate to see us do anything precipitous, that is, start spending money right away, or, you know, not creating as much surplus. So I would just, I would just hope that we would go back and revisit the guidelines, and be cautious and reasonable about what we're doing, and what we create at the end.
Sounds good. Okay.
Deb, before we go back to the...
Just real quick, the one thought I have on the guideline front is somebody who's new, and is sitting here trying to soak all of this sort of thing in. I know I look, as I'm getting ready to send my oldest in a year and a half to college, we have our surplus, we have our savings account, and what is the right amount that we can keep that at, so we don't, you know, we have three going to college. So I think, for me, guidelines for the public, they hear ten to fourteen million dollars in surplus, and you go, holy crap, what do they need that for? Maybe we do, maybe we don't, but I think having those guidelines, the public is more aware of what's appropriate, would also be very helpful, because as somebody sitting here, you know, trying to figure out all these numbers, and I sat with Jim briefly, we'll sit down again to go through them, it would be good to know. What do other towns do? What do the states say? What are the guidelines?
Yeah, without a perspective, it's, what does it mean?
And just in closing, Councilman Rowe mentions certain fourteen million dollars, but a number of that is restricted, a million dollars for new meters, for the water meter system. It's not encumbered, it could be used if it had to go someplace else, reserve for substation replacement, and reserve for tax appeals. Those are set aside. We typically don't have them, but we do at this point, well, we have the tax appeal reserve all the time, but we typically don't have the meters and substation. But we have that, because those are two pretty big projects that we see coming up. And as everyone has said here, we want to be forward-thinking and plan for these large capital items.
Yep.
So...
One last thing I'd like to thank Pat for putting together this surplus and free balance analysis. Well done. Thanks.
Welcome, John.
Is that English?
And Jim helped, too?
Yes. In case you didn't hear that, it was, you're welcome, John, from Pat.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Not yet, almost.
My question is about this fourteen million dollars, okay? If it's unencumbered, can we use it for big projects that maybe could be very useful to the borough?
A lot of it would, a lot of it is in surplus, either electric, water, or municipal surplus. And if you don't appropriate that, either through the budget or through an emergency, you can't use it. But it's there for next year. So we know that if we have a bad year, we're using five million in municipal surplus. We know if we have a bad year, we have money there. But there's also extra money in, let's say, the general capital account, to Astrae's point. We don't have it down at zero, and then we're putting more money into it and going to spend it down to zero again. There's a little extra in there, because maybe there's another project that comes along, or maybe a road gets really damaged this spring, and we decide it's going to get bumped up on the milling and overlay schedule. So we have some funds there, and on the capital side, you absolutely could appropriate that this year.
So I think that with planning, the answer is yes, it can be appropriated in that manner. And as we said, as we pull this group together, that they have to be mindful, like road maintenance, where we have a consistent budget year to year, because we have, in theory, a twenty-year plan, that's a little tougher to do a major spend, because all of a sudden, twenty years down the line, you have roads that are coming up, because you've spent, as opposed to electric meter projects, things like that, that are not quite one time, but they're certainly not every year.
Just to kind of sum it up.
And then to Astrae.
You know, we've gotten the budget to the point with the capital program, where we've got a good amount of money. We did the strategic planning, and we feel like we're actually funding things at the right level and consistently, so that's good. And because we run three different businesses, we have free balance in each, we have capital surplus in each, we have reserve accounts in each, I felt we need to kind of pull it all together and just, like, holistically look at what the borough has control over, we have control over. And because the money's in a lot of different places, no one of them looks really big, but when you kind of handle them all together, even if you set aside the reserve accounts, it's still about ten million dollars that's just free balance, that's not being used for anything right now. So that's why I think, you know, we do need to do this kind of exercise every year as well, and actually at the start of the budget process, so we understand kind of what our position is coming out of the previous year, relative to where we've been.
Astrae, then Maureen?
I still say this is a good thing we have, because we are dependent upon JCPN, the feeder lines for electric utility. We do have a big, huge project coming up with a joint meeting, and that infrastructure is always in need of work. And then our affordable housing obligations, that's going to be a big one for us, and I'm not sure...
I didn't put that three million dollars in.
What?
Put that three million in.
I think, and to give people in the room, and those watching at home, a little homework assignment might be to read the story of Lower Alaway Township. That was in the Star Ledger recently. Because of nuclear power plant, they were more than happy to take a nuclear power plant in their municipality, and they reaped the benefits of it for years and years, building the fanciest schools and everything, and never looked to the day that the cash cow would be sent to the slaughterhouse. And so now they're in a position, they have not charged school taxes in decades, and the school has gone downhill, the rating has gone way downhill. They've sold off assets because they looked at the day only and not to the future. So I think this body, and previous bodies in this room, should be very proud of how they've done it, and we have this, and we will do it in a very mindful manner to get it, keep, you know, get it back to where it should be, and be mindful of future councils, that we don't want to have them put our faces on a dartboard.
So I have two points. One is that, you know, this allows us to act on something if it comes up. So if an opportunity presents itself to the municipality, perhaps for more recreation, for housing, for whatever, we have the opportunity to act on it, that we wouldn't have if we didn't have a sufficient pot set aside. And yes, Pat, it's coming from, you know, three different entities, but those different entities, while they are managed by the municipality, they still operate separately. So we can't take, if water has a bad year, we can't take money from electric and put it in. It's, even though, even though, so yes, you have to look at it and say, yes, the free balance carrying forward year to year is high, but you just can't, you can't slash it or move it down without being aware and cognizant of what is being depended upon for those three entities.
I mean, I just want to...
I know you get it, so...
I want people to be clear that, you know, we do move money between all of them, mainly from the utilities over. So in a given year, if we had to leave, you know, another three million in the electric utility, we could, you know, because we have money in the free balance in the general fund. So we do have a lot of flexibility. I mean, in many, in many ways, I think because we don't look at it sometimes holistically, we don't realize how much we do have. And each one looks okay, but when you kind of put them all together, you're like, hmm, that's a bit more money than I thought we actually had. I was actually surprised how large the number was. I knew it was growing and to me, the thing that was, the bigger thing is that it's growing at a pretty good clip. I mean, we, over the last six years, we've probably added between a million and a million and a quarter dollars per year, this sort of free balance. So that's, that's a lot. I mean, our municipal taxes have only grown by a minuscule amount, especially what, our tax rate's hardly grown at all. I think it's only up like 3% in the last six years. We've mainly been...
Totally, yeah.
Yeah, utilizing the new, the new, you know, teardowns, new ratables to cover the tax increase that we have imposed on the town. So like I said, we're in a very good position. I just think in some respects, we're in too good a position.
So to move this on to the next slide, because I think we're, we're pretty much in, except for nuances, we're in agreement and we have, I think, a path to work on our areas of agreement and refine our areas of disagreement. So with that, let's, I don't know if we...
We don't need to go through this. It's homework for people who might be watching this on TV to grab a presentation. We're on slide 27 now, how surplus is generated, slide 28, that surplus, as Councilwoman Bailey said, is a good thing. And the surplus guideline, which is guideline 1B, states that we, the prior end municipal surplus should be no more than 25%. We're at 32%, an indication that we're over it, that it's trending into the wrong direction. And the guideline indicates that we need to monitor the surplus, as has been mentioned here. It's not a bad problem, but it is something we need to monitor. And as Councilwoman Cohen said, everyone has a different mindset on how much money they need to have set aside for something. So to resolve the surplus imbalance as it relates to the budget, this budget has addressed it in three ways. We've increased anticipated revenues, we're utilizing more surplus, municipal surplus in the budget as revenue, and we're offering a 0% tax increase for existing properties. So the municipal budget, which is on slide 31 for Councilman Hoover, outlines these different areas where there is either a significant increase or in the line of property taxes where it's flat. And those three items will have a soft but muting effect to throttle back on the growth of municipal surplus in the coming years. You'll also see in the budget line, you'll see that the tax revenue, it's a new line on the municipal budget as we presented here, this one sheet budget summary, that there's tax revenue, quote unquote, from the GVR apartments and condos, that $370,000. So just bring that to everyone's attention. The electric utility budget, primarily unchanged from what we, oh, I'm sorry?
I think Deb has a question.
That's great. Just a quick question on slide 31B6, the state aid, the number's the same? Is that a known number or are we still waiting for a state aid number?
Governor's budget message is tomorrow, so we'll find out.
It's the same number year after year. They just keep giving us roughly the same thing.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, we hope it's the same. Good question.
Good question.
So the electric utility budget, not much has changed on this. I did have a, sorry, apologize. The only thing I changed since, I pushed up the revenues from the last time we talked about this, up $100,000 in cash collections and increased the dividend to $2 million as requested by the governing body and by members of the governing body and to again try to throttle back on the generation of surplus. And those two, those two items are reflected in this, in this budget. As a result, the amount that's transferred to the municipal budget was reduced and that's the line E13. That line dropped, which improved the overall surplus position of the utility. So...
Jim, before you go on, can you go back for one second?
Back to...
The electric one. There you go. The subtotal free balance, when we did the initial analysis on doing the dividend slash cut, I thought we were trying to hold the free balance somewhere between a million and $2 million. It's actually now up to 3 plus, according to the sheet. I mean, this isn't something we have to decide for the budget, if we want to add to the rate cut, because that is something we have to take as a separate action later this spring. But I would ask if you could take a look at whether we could maybe add another $2.50 to it because I think we're, again, that's still going up above where we really wanted it to be.
Well, I don't, there's no, there's no guideline for the electric utility free balance.
No, I understand that, but when we had the discussion, I thought as a group, we kind of agreed we were going to try to keep it in a certain range and $3 million was above that range.
If you, if you see the 2020 estimates, it drops back down, but what I have actually assumed, which may be precocious of me, or presumptuous, I should say, is, is another possible $2 million electric utility dividend next year. I did not have that when we previously talked about it. So if we play that out for another one or two years, I think we'll see that surplus balance naturally work its way down too.
So you expect that trend? So it's going, it's going down about 300 as projected, so...
Yeah, I would still say that's Jim's very conservative estimate. And if you looked at what he estimated we'd have this year, it's probably a bit lower than it is now. And we also are going to have, we just talked about the fact that we have a new customer that's going to be fully engaged this year with utility. So we might want to take another look at that just to see if we can push it up just a little bit more. I think we're very in a comfortable position there, so.
Yeah. Good point.
The targeted electric rebate, which we're also increasing from $150 to $200, or talking about an increase, where is that in one of the, I don't expect it to be a separate line item because I know it's smaller, is it, where would that be reflected?
It's actually a relatively small amount and it's reflected in cash collections, so it's really net. So it's about $40,000 at that results in, but it's cash that we didn't collect. So in reality, we, if we had it a separate line, it would be $22,740,000 in estimated cash collections and then a negative $40,000 in the targeted rebate.
All right.
Yeah, I just have one question on E14, the free balance. In 2015, it was $263,000. And now in 2019, the estimate is up, as Pat said, $3 million. Why was it so low in 2015?
That was the dark ages...
Transition of contracts.
Transition of contract in 2015.
Yeah. So as we were...
It's a five-year contract.
Just wrapping up that high contract and, you know...
It lasted that long?
It was a five-year thing.
It ended in June of 2014.
I thought it actually started earlier and ended earlier. Okay, thank you.
Look at the block contract.
That's the number I, I look at and I go, thank God we have the nice, robust surplus now.
If you look at E5, you'll, you can see the cost of the contract purchases in 2015, $11 million.
Right.
Now?
Right.
That was the last year of the constellation contract.
I didn't realize it was, yeah, but I didn't realize in 2015 it was still with us.
I thought it ended June of 2014.
Jim?
I'd have to, I'd have to verify that, but whatever the case may be, the, that contract and the lack of revenue that was being generated, additional revenues being generated by the utility is the cause of the free balance being that low in that time.
Oh, that I agree with, yeah.
Yeah, certainly when it expired is one thing, but certainly it's $11 million on the, on the sheet.
It's interesting to see how much transmission has gone up, just 16, 17, 18, and I hate to tell you, it's, it's going to go up. I mean, it's, I have a lower estimate in 2020, but, but that's, that's going to go up in the, we've talked about that. So a neat thing that I wanted to bring up is that council over the years has approved over $6 million in electric rate relief over the last four years. So when you combine the electric utility dividend for 17, 18, and 19, you get to that, so.
Jim? Jim, when is our transmission contract with JCPN up?
Good point. It's locked in through 2020. That was through a negotiated settlement. And we will see that coming down the road because they'll have to go in front of a FERC, a federal energy regulatory commission and in front of the Board of Public Utilities and in front of PJM through a stakeholder process to increase that. But they've tried multiple ways to do that. They tried to spin off the company and have it be its own separate transmission company, that was JCPN. That, that didn't work out, so somehow, some way, it's coming. Okay. Strategic planning guidelines, as the guidelines state, we should look at these every year and they're... Thank you.
Water over the dam.
Water over the, just trying to swim right through that. So in any event, so water utility, very little changes, actually no changes to the revenues and expenses that were presented in January 2018. The, I just note that line W8 is the amount that's used in the municipal budget on line B10, that these documents do have points and numbers that tie from the water utility to the municipal budget, from the electric utility to the municipal budget. So there's no other changes of significance to the water utility numbers. Going to the strategic planning guidelines, as we've discussed in the past, the guidelines provide structure to the annual budget process to assure that a decision on one part of the budget does not have an unintended consequence on another element of the budget. And there are a number of guidelines that we've been tracking for a number of years and we are within compliance on every guideline, with the exception of the surplus guideline, which is guideline 1B, which we are above. So we're not in a bad situation with that surplus guideline. It's just, as we've talked about here earlier, have a little more surplus than we think we really need, so we're looking for ways to ratchet that back. And as I discussed, the budget does that. So there are guidelines that talk about the operation shortfall and how much of the municipal budget is appropriated. Through, through that, there's operation, there's guidelines in terms of the amount of water and electric utility surplus transferred to the total budget. That just came into compliance with this year, that's guideline 3A. And these numbers refer to the 2014 document. That's why, what does 3A mean? It's just the number that was assigned to it back during that time. So guideline 3A, we had been out of compliance with that for 15, 16, 17, and 18, but with the reduction in our reliance of the utility surplus in this year's budget, we're in compliance there, so that's good. Debt services, a percentage of total appropriations, another guideline that we're in, capital improvement fund as a, in percentage to the total of appropriations. These are all here. There is a link on the document, on, that'll be on RoseNet, that'll take people to the, to the actual guideline document that was created in 2014. And I'm available if anyone has any questions on that.
And just want to hit on one thing, just in case it comes up, that people are aware that we are doing major improvements at the sewer treatment plant, which we're bonding for. And someone might say, well, why aren't you using your surplus for that? Well, it's either 0% or very low percent interest. And so for something like that, it makes a whole lot of sense to go ahead and borrow and spread it over multiple years and we will not have to use our reserve for that.
Correct. And we have enough room within guideline 4A on the debt service to be able to accommodate a small increase. There's no other foreseen debt borrowing other than that in the foreseeable future. There are other strategic planning guidelines that we don't have in this table that are out there. I've mentioned them here in terms of what happens to surplus in excess of 25%. These are guidelines, they're talking points, but there are some that we're compliant with. New borrowing should be limited to capital assets having a useful life of at least 15 years. Our answer to that is yes. As part of the budget cycle, the CFO will prepare a five-year history on how the budgets have performed relative to the guidelines. And we just talked about that. So yay, we did that too. So we're, we're checking off a lot of boxes and some of these are just there to look at, to know that they're there. And if there is an issue, I'd bring it to your attention, but there are none at this point in time with any of these guidelines.
Maureen?
And, and kind of going, going back a bit, I think we need to remember that we were putting $25,000 into this budget for field maintenance and renovation of the grass fields in Madison. And we are also contemplating and actually working on updating the master plan. And some of this money will, will go towards that process, which every, every municipality should do on a, you know, on a regular basis.
So there are a few issues in 2020 and beyond we just want to bring to everyone's attention. They're not of serious significance, but, but we'll, we'll see some changes to the, some budget numbers in 2020 and beyond. We anticipate our garbage and recycling costs are going to go up. There are major expenses that have been flat for two years, like our health insurance and our sewage processing that will likely go up in 2020. Affordable housing litigation cost is just a big question mark. Pension costs are always a question mark, and we talked about a few weeks ago during the, when we talked about operation, the operations and the appropriations. The PFRS pension line went up significantly over 10% this year. That's pension for police and fire. As we talked about, their debt service for, as the mayor talked about, for the sewage treatment plant. And in the out years, we have contracts that go for a couple more years with our collective bargaining units, but in the future, there is not an arbitration cap, which there was the last time, there was one in place the last time we had negotiations. That might make negotiations more challenging from a management perspective.
Deb?
Just a question on the garbage and recycling costs. With the discussion of recycling that's been huge in town about how to increase recycling, has there been talk about single-stream recycling at all and how, what does that do to costs?
So our recycling contract is up this year and we are in talks with all different providers to figure out the best course of action. When you go single-stream, you can't go back to dual-stream. One of the benefits of dual-stream is that our paper recycling is really clean. It doesn't have yogurt, it doesn't have pizza juice, it doesn't have glass ground into it, which happens when it all goes into one container. And as a result, we were getting a fair, fairly good price for that paper and we were actually making money, $40,000 a year or more on that. Right now, the markets are suppressed, which is why we see that cost going up in 2020 and beyond. But we will certainly look at, over the next few months, all the different options. But as a PSA, I've talked to two residents today, recycling going forward, the commingled cans and plastic containers should not be in plastic bags, it just needs to be straight in a bin or your recycling won't be picked up.
And while we are separating our recycling on like a lot of other towns, I think our percent of participation is still any very high. And then when you look at what, what Madison does positive for the environment by having paper that can be more easily reused, I think we're doing pretty well. Maureen?
And, you know, we talk about the effect of the global economy on little Madison, but part of the reason we're, we're seeing the prices are depressed is because China is not buying the paper and China is not buying our recyclables, which is not to say we shouldn't recycle and, and do all we can. But we are seeing, we are seeing efforts in town to increase recycling. Stop &amp; Shop has a "Remember Your Bag" signs all over the front, so I know they're working with the senior centers, so, you know, every little bit helps.
Yep. That's correct. All right. Alternate form, we're coming close to the end here. The budget in the ultimate, alternate format is a format suggested by the Strategic Planning Committee. It just shows the budget laid out slightly differently. And then there is the more graphical version that visual, more visual people might like and...
I love this.
Yeah.
He designed it.
Ostry did it by hand.
Here it is, everybody.
That's very impressive.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
These cool computers.
Very visual.
And so this just shows the, this is actually an interesting, you know, if you, if this makes sense to you visually, you get to see the connectivity between the utility budgets, the operating budgets and surplus and how it all interrelates on one single sheet. And I'm not going to go into the numbers because they're just reflective of what we've talked about and laid out in other formats, but with that...
Any other questions? I think we covered things pretty well as we went through there and just... And just to reiterate what we say every year, we have a great team in not only putting this whole budget together, but presenting it in a way that people can understand. And so Jim, thank you for all, all that work. And there is, there might be other towns that did strategic planning and have guidelines, but that, as a reminder, is not a state thing, that is a Madison thing, that we, we put our budget to the test, and it helps to see where we are. So if there is no other questions, what I would like is to entertain a motion to authorize the CFO to prepare the state budget document based on what you, we have just seen.
I move that we authorize the CFO to do a budget.
Any further discussion?
Just the fact that I would like Jim to take a hard look at the free balance in the electric utility, because I think there is opportunity there. I, I think we're okay working on some of the other stuff, but I think we do need a detailed plan to really be sure that we're making progress over the next several years, but that's the one area this year I think we can still take a look at.
So and we'll also, we'll put together, we'll look at the, our finance strategic planning group to look at the overall surplus and work with some of the members here, so we'll work on that in the next, over the next couple of meetings, put that group together. All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Bern?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes, as presented.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
And we're on to invitation for public comment. And we have quite a crowd here, for those who won't turn the camera around. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward, state your name, and keep your comments. Two, three minutes.
You've got to sit up to get a credit, Joe.
Seeing none, close that part of the meeting.
Mayor, I move.
I just wanted, no, I just wanted to say, the fact that we don't have an ordinance, is that, maybe we could pat ourselves on the back that we are doing a good, good job here?
I, I think it says a lot of, I think it, I think one of the things is, Pat would, you know, we shouldn't take it that we, we, we don't need to be very attentive, but I think people are, are happy with what's going on in Madison. I think, I think our viewing audience at home is fairly large. I know we've, as Jim knows also, that within 24 hours of this being posted, we will hear from one of our planning partners, who will bring up some questions, and so people are paying attention at home, and will be giving us feedback. And I, so I think that says a lot about our great town.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you for accommodating me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We practiced with him this morning at 11 o'clock, and went through exactly that, and then called him.
Ask him a question.